Call this meeting to order.
First, our roll call, please.
Alderman Bass.
Here.
Alderman Cleaver.
Here.
Alderman Headley.
Here.
Alderman Knox.
Here.
Alderman Mills.
Here.
Alderman Stratton.
Here.
Here's the form.
Next order of business invocation led by Pastor Mike Cassidy of Faith United Methodist, followed by pledge of allegiance led by Casey Stratton.
Let us pray. Gracious and loving God, we praise you for your continued acts of creation and we thank you for all that we have been given. We gather today in your name seeking to do your will for the people of Green Valley. So we ask you pour out your spirit that our thoughts might move ever closer to your thoughts and that our actions might move ever closer to your mighty acts in this world. Lord God, be with us in our time together and it's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next order of business, approval of agenda?
No changes, Mayor.
Next item, proclamation, seeing none, move on, citizens' participation. Then we would like to address the board. We ask that you give your name and address and let me just comment to two minutes, please.
I'm Jane Burrell, 1035 Euphrates. Last time we had a council meeting, I spoke, I have the impression that I irritated some of you. Yeah, I'm sorry if that was the case. Alderman Stratton asked a question of the chief, which helped me clarify the point I was trying to get at. Chief called me the next day to, to correct, I guess, yes, the number of police officers since 2005. And the chief called to correct that there had been a couple since then. I appreciate that very much. The question, and then it was the mayor's message. I went back and reread the mayor's message. That helped me finally come to it. He mentions talking about our need for a police station, that the population of Green Valley has tripled since 2000. So my question is, have the number of city workers tripled since the year 2000 or the number of police officers tripled since the year 2000? That was really what I was trying to get at. Also, I'd like to know how we compare with cities of our size with, in terms of city workers and police. So does that make my question clear, what I'm trying to get at clear? I apologize for being so inarticulate. So is there an answer to my question?
I don't, I think we answered last time. I don't know that that's a true need, that just because you triple in size, everything else triples. We feel that we have adequate police department, adequate work staff right now.
And then how do you define adequate? If this is related to the number of people they're serving, how do you define adequate?
Meeting the needs of the people they're serving. And we feel, we feel we're doing that right now.
So the tunnels on my street are not in need of repair? The number of cars have been broken into? They're not increasing? We don't have any road problem?
This, this is citizens' comment, Jan or Mr. O. If you want to make comments, fine, it's not discussion period.
Is there some, could someone present to me when I come next time, the number of these people we had in 2000 and the number we have now? Is that too much to ask?
If you want to make that, submit that request to the City Clerk. It's all public information, we can get that for you.
Okay, but I would like it to be set at a city council meeting so citizens can hear it. Is that appropriate?
That's not the normal format or type of situation for this, so.
So there's some reason that the citizens of the city don't need to know these numbers?
Like I said, if you, if you have comments, this is for comments. It's not for questions, it's not a question and answer session.
My, my. Well, I have the questions, I don't have my contact information. To whom do I give the questions?
If you'll submit to the City Clerk, she'll get any public information you need.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none, move on to consent agenda?
Mayor, I move we accept the consent agenda.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second from Alderman Knox, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion carries six zero. Next item, previous business, seeing none, new business, seeing none. Presentation, seeing none, public hearing, none. Next item, resolution. Resolution R twenty-one dash fifty-two is a resolution by the Board of Aldermen, City of Green Valley, authorizing the city administrator entering into agreement with Huffer Welker LLC for architectural services related to planning and design of police stations.
Mayor, I move that we accept resolution R twenty-one dash five-two.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Headley, any discussion?
Mayor, members of the board, if you remember when we took the city campus plan to the voters in June of 2020, that issue had failed. And then in subsequent workshops and meetings with you all, we kind of went through the problems that still existed, knowing that we needed to find a solution for that. And at that time, what you directed staff to do was go through the process of getting an architect onboard for the purpose of designing a new police station and then whatever level of subsequent renovation to City Hall would come. So we did put out that RFQ, we went through that process and did have multiple responses. We interviewed three firms and Alderman Knox was the board representative on that selection committee. After going through the RFQ responses and going through the interview process, Haffer Welker was the firm that we thought best fit the need that we had for the police station. The main reason being, that's a lot of what they do. They had multiple examples of projects that could be similar to ours in calling the references. They all had great experiences working with them. So if you remember when we went through budget for 2021, out of the capital improvement fund, we did put money in there for, for that part of the, the project, not knowing exactly at the time which way we were going to go, but with the, ultimately going with the police station, we did have the money in that fund for that. So it's estimated the cost for this fiscal year would be seventy thousand for that design. One of the things that we're proposing to the board is to, to not go all in and spend all of the design money upfront before an election would happen. So it, if you look through the proposal there, it's, live around a hundred and fifty thousand is the total before, before bond election cost for that. So anything subsequent to that, if the voters were to approve it, would be rolled into whatever that bond amount would be, which obviously would be covered by the debt service levy. But we do have a representative from Haffer Welker here, Nick Lawler is in the back as well for any questions, so.
Questions, additional comments?
Yeah, do I understand that this is out of the 2021 budget and not the 2022 budget?
There would be multiple phases. The, if you look at the agenda sheet that's in there, there's the amounts for each year.
So are we approving just for 2020, out of 2021's budget since we haven't set?
Correct, and that, yeah, that'll be something that'll be in the proposed budget to you guys for the, the next, so basically pre-bond, you'd be looking at, that's something like around eighty thousand next year for that. And then anything after that would be if the issue actually passed.
Okay, I just want to make sure we weren't spending next year's money already.
No, we cannot do that.
There's no questions, comments?
So, yeah, Ken, and I apologize, I think you just went over this, but I'm going to ask for clarification one more time. Good mention, a few different figures as far as the 2021 budget goes. There was the seventy thousand, I think you might have just mentioned the eighty. And then on the AIA, it shows one fifty-one six. Can you just clarify exactly?
Yep, so that number that's in there, I think it says actually it's phase one, like pre-bond. And so, yeah, I was, I guess off a thousand on that. Basically, what we did was we got with the architectural firm and thought, and to find out how much would actually be expended in 2021. And so that's where the seventy thousand dollar figure came in and then the eighty-one would be what we'd be asking for, for next year.
No additional questions, comments?
So is there any plans to try to add to the department, add the number of people to the, to the police force? I mean, I guess my only problem is agreeing to do something like this, and I will say I must have misunderstood somewhere along the line. When we decided on the location, I wasn't solid for that location and I didn't realize we were moving ahead to get a design, like this far in the process to put a design together. I know when Tom and I met with you and Teresa, we both expressed to you guys that that wasn't, that location was not where we were solid, you know, really wanting to put it, but, so I'm, I am having a hard time adding, agreeing to spend money when, if we're not also planning to add to the number of people in the department.
Well, I would say with that, that's not, it's two separate issues or pots to start with. So this money is all, it's capital improvement fund money. So it would be for things like buildings or equipment that, you know, that meet the capital improvement definition.
I do understand, it's totally different. I just know, I just don't know that there's been any conversations about adding to the number of department in our city. So I want to make sure that I, that's something I would like to have happen.
That, that's a budget issue, that's not, that's separate from this issue.
It just goes into my thinking of how do I look at this going forward? Like, it's part of my decision-making and if I'm okay, okaying to move forward with something like this, knowing if we are or we aren't looking to add to the department. Because over the course of three years, if we can spend seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the design for this one building, what are we willing to spend to add to our police force?
Yeah, and I would just keep in mind too, when you throw out like that seven hundred thousand dollar figure, that's not something that would be coming out of, say, the general fund that, that pays for positions or salaries. That would be something that would be rolled into the construction amount that the bond would pay for. So that would come straight, that'd be funded out of the debt service levy. That wouldn't be a, it's not, it's not an either or, it's not, if you don't spend that seven hundred thousand dollars, then there's seven hundred thousand dollars sitting there to spend on something else. It's two separately funded items. And I would also say too, I mean, one of the reasons that we, we knew even though that bond issue passed, we still needed to, we saw the problems we needed to address was even without adding in, there's not even enough, I mean, there's definite deficiencies in the, the building that are there now, that exists now. So it's kind of twofold, it's fixing the problem for now and for future.
From four hundred and thirty thousand for fiscal year 2022, where's that?
That's like total design fee, but once you get past that one fifty-one that's on there, whatever is left with that would be rolled into the bond. It wouldn't come out of like our normal capital improvement budget or anything like that. It would be part of the amount that the voters would be asked to approve.
And I have two additional things, I'm sorry, Ken. So I would just like first to say that I also have, I also support Alderman Stratton in saying that we should, I understand it's a separate issue, but I think that we should definitely look at adding to our police fours at some point in the near future. But also, can you tell me, how much did we have earmarked for this in the twenty-one budget as it compares to this?
We had a hundred thousand in there.
Okay.
Ken, I think maybe now's a good time for the people that don't understand how the bond works, is the bond is for buildings and materials and, and police cars and stuff. It cannot be used for salaries and a lot of people don't understand that.
Yeah, so when we'd go for that, so when you look at the, your property, your tax levy, there's different lines basically that make up that total and debt service is one of those. And debt service is what you would, when you go and take out a general obligation bond, it's paid for out of that debt service line, that, that portion of the levy. So you can't, you can't mix.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think a lot of people understand that.
Like salaries and that would be, any of that's out of more like the general operating side of it.
So just to clarify, so we're looking at a design for the space back here, but that's not set in stone yet as, as, as the place to go, right? It's just kind of a design to see the feasibility of the, of that area?
I mean, that was the direction, the overall direction for that was to look, yeah, I mean feasibility is always the, we haven't done any studies or anything for there. It was, when the RFQ was put out, it was, there was a square basically put on that area and that was the request for design for that. Similar to renovation of this building, there's completely different levels of that that could happen and that would be a decision that you have to make further down the road on what you would, what level you would want that to be based on how long you, you know, you see this being City Hall, if it's permanent or if it's not, obviously you'd have a decision to make on that going forward.
Additional questions, comments?
Is this a one vote thing tonight or does it come back?
No, this is a, yeah, it's a resolution, so it's one.
No additional questions? That being said, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying nay.
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 Show of hands on a nays, please. Okay, so it's three, three. I'll break the tie at voting in favor. Next item, ordinances?
Ordinance B twenty-one twenty-two is an ordinance of the City of Green Valley, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into a comprehensive development incentives agreement related to the Mercado commercial development.
I move that we accept the second reading of bill number B twenty-one dash twenty-two and approve it as ordinance number twenty-five fifty-seven. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Headley, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Oh, I'm sorry, this is a roll call, the second, second vote.
Alderman Bass.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Headley.
Yes.
Alderman Knox.
Yes.
Alderman Mills.
Yes.
Alderman Stratton.
Yes.
Motion carries six zero. Next item, bill B twenty-one dash twenty-three.
This is an ordinance approving the final development plan and the final plat for Creekside Villas.
I move that we accept the second reading of bill number B twenty-one dash twenty-three.
First, first reading.
Oh, I'm sorry. I move that we accept the first reading of bill B number twenty-one dash twenty-three and bring it back for its second reading by title only at our next regular session.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Cleaver, any discussion?
I was going to turn it over to Mr. Trozen for just a second to go over this.
Mayor and members of the board, the Board of Aldermen approved ordinance two-five-four-five on May twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one, that changed the zoning on approximately three point one five acres from District C one, Central Business District, to R three P, multi-family residential district, planned overlay district, and approved the preliminary development plan for Creekside Villas. The applicant, Mr. Jeff Handy, is here in the audience. The final development plan that is before you for approval is identical to the preliminary development plan and complies with the requirements of the city's land use regulation. The final plat, Creekside Villas, meets all the requirements of the city's subdivision regulation. Staff recommends approval of the final development plan and final plat for Creekside Villas. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed the final development plan and final plat at their September eighth, two thousand twenty-one meeting. And at that meeting, they recommended approval of both the final development plan and the final plat.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion carries six zero. Next item, bill B twenty-one dash twenty-four.
This is an ordinance amending chapter one thirty dot zero two zero court costs of the code of ordinances of the City of Green Valley, Missouri, to include the state court automation surcharge.
Mayor, I move that we accept the first reading of bill number B twenty-one dash twenty-four and bring it back for its second reading by title only at our next regular session.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Headley, any discussion?
Mayor and members of the board, this would be to bring our fees in conformance with the state requirement that has to do with the implementation of a new court system called Show Me Courts. So we, I guess in basic terms, we don't really have much of a choice. That's the system that we have to go to and they're requiring a fee be tacked on basically to each case for that. So it's kind of an administrative function to make sure that our code now matches with the state will be requiring at the first of next year.
Additional questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion carries six zero. Next item of business, city attorney's report?
No reports tonight, Your Honor, but we do have a closed session.
Okay. Next item, city administrator staff report?
I'll start with Mr. Davies.
Mayor and board, I just wanted to remind everyone that we are having our ribbon cutting officially of the Blue Branch Creek Trail. It's this upcoming Wednesday at two o'clock there at the, we'll meet at the trailhead parking lot, which is just north of the traffic circle there on Snibar Boulevard, just at the dead end across Creek Drive.
I'm sorry, when is that?
This upcoming Wednesday at two o'clock.
Okay.
Mr. Trozen?
There are two items that I'd like to share with you this evening. The first one is our annual household hazardous waste event. That's this Saturday. It's from eight AM to noon or until the trucks are full, so please come early. This is again, we're co-hosting this with Jackson County. So it's at the Jackson County Public Works Facility and that's on East Old US forty highway. So that address is three four nine zero zero, East Old US forty highway. This is free for residents of Green Valley. So if you have paint or paint-related products, automotive fluids, batteries, lawn and garden chemicals, glues and adhesives, household cleaners that you want to get rid of and get, clean out your basements and, and garages, bring them to this event and we'll take them. The other thing that I would like to share with you is, if you recall, Alderman Stratton had asked the city engineer to look into and study if no parking signs on the east side of Leanne was warranted. So city engineer Dick Tuttle conducted a study in regards to that particular issue. There were two items that he looked at, as you recall from the last Board of Aldermen meeting, he, he canvassed the neighborhood with letters. There were approximately twenty-six residents that he sent letters to as far as hangers on their doors. In regard to that response, there were eight responses to that letter. Seven of those responses were against the no parking on the east side of Leanne and there was only one response in favor of the nor, no parking sign. Now, in addition to that, he also looked at the city ordinances in regards to if there was any condition of the city ordinance that would also warrant the no parking signs. There is a section in the code three-five-five point oh-two-oh that states that no person shall park any vehicle upon a street other than an alley in a manner or under such conditions as to leave available less than ten feet of width for free movement of vehicle traffic. So when you have the two trailers that were referenced on the east side and the west side of Leanne, there is less than ten feet between them. However, what the city engineer concluded, as you all know, that's a dead-end street. And so what he concluded was that based on that analysis, there is no reason to install no parking signs along the road. no parking signs along the road. The only ordinance that restricts it is a section that I just read. However, since there are no vehicles that are restricted from passing through because of the dead end nature of the street, this is not an issue, was his conclusion. And therefore, not a need to install no parking signs.
And then we'll finish up with Chief Beal.
Mayor, Board, I just want to make you aware that tomorrow from six to eight-thirty, we'll have a national night out at the Pavilion in Armstrong Park. There'll be demonstrations, free raffles, demonstrations, and just come out and support us.
Uh, no further comments.
Next item, Alderman reports and comments, Alderman Bass?
Nothing at this time.
Alderman Cleaver?
Nothing at this time.
Alderman Headley?
Nothing at this time.
Alderman Knox?
Nothing at this time.
Alderman Mills?
Actually, yes, I would. Um, I just want to go on record to say that I do support our police department as past president of Green Valley VIPS. Um, I'd like to see police retention, I'd love to see increase in pay. Um, you know, there's a vicious rumor on Book of Faces going out there about disbandment. I'm no part of that. I have all the respect for chief, the police officers, and that's why I held that position. That's why I volunteered as a VIP and gave up my time along with my wife's time. Thank you.
Alderman Stratton?
Um, I would just say to Jan, Ms. Brill, if, if you do request that information and it, I guess it goes to Jamie, is that what I'm understanding? If you want to give it, pass it on to me, I'd be happy to read what you find in my Alderman comments section so that there's not continued discussion, but so that the information would still get out, if that's okay.
Uh, next item, mayor's report. Because of the posts and the bashing that's, that's been going on for the police department, we pulled up some figures today. The state, the crime rate is twenty-six-point-four, that's some per thousand. Green Valley has the lowest crime rate of any of the regional cities. We have a fourteen-point-four. Oak Grove has a sixteen-point-eight. Blue Springs has a twenty-one-point-nine. Lee Summit has a twenty-one-point-one. Harrisonville has a thirty-nine-point-one. Uh, the only city in the immediate area that's lower than us is Kearney, and it has a ten-point-two. We also did a study on the number of service calls we've been taking for the last six years. In two thousand sixteen, we took four thousand six-hundred-and-eighty-four calls. Two thousand seventeen was our high in the last six years, we took four thousand seven-hundred-and-twenty-two calls, so roughly forty more calls than the previous year. Ever since, and it's been dropping, two thousand eighteen was forty, four thousand four-hundred-and-fifty-eight. Two thousand nineteen was forty-two, four thousand two-hundred-and-eighty-four. Two thousand twenty was three thousand nine-hundred-and-thirty-five. So far this year is twenty-eight twenty-six, which is right about on the level to hit where we were in two thousand nineteen, so. While there's a perception of more vandalism and, and crime activity, it's not related to calls. These calls, on an average over the last, last six years, have averaged thirteen calls a day. So there isn't a crisis that's being put forward on Facebook, and I just wanted to get that out there for everybody's knowledge. That's all I have. We do have a need for executive session, need a motion, please?
Uh, it'd be for one, legal, two, real estate, and then twelve, contract.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All, are any discussion? All in favor, roll call, please.
Alderman Bass?
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver?
Yes.
Alderman Headley?
Yes.
Alderman Knox?
Yes.
Alderman Mills? Alderman Stratton?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero, adjourned executive session.